Republic.
For which stands, one nation, united in the world, with liberty and justice for all.
So, an agenda has been circulated and that's in front of everyone. Madam Clerk, I note the presence of a quorum.
I confirm the quorum.
Thank you. Are there any questions or requests on the agenda? Is the agenda acceptable to everyone? Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the previous two meetings. One was our August 5th regular meeting. The other was our August 21st special council meeting. So, we'll start with the October 5th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
And I would like to make, I would like to propose a very minor change to the minutes myself. I just did notice this under the mayor's report. It, it's noted that historic best practice was to connect storm water and wastewater systems. I don't know that we can say that that was historic best practice. I think we'd be better to say that it was common in older areas of municipalities for storm water to be connected to the wastewater systems. And then it further reads, this is no longer best practice. As a result, any connections will be, instead of severed, I would say disconnected. And I think in some cases, we're just opting to put a cover so that the storm water can't go in. So, we'll just say disconnected. So, is there a motion for that friendly amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And so then approval with that amendment for the August 5th council meeting minutes? With the amendment then, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. So, sorry for that last minute. After reading that a couple of times today, I just thought we would be better to clarify. August 21, we had a special council meeting to deal with the water damage to the building and to approve appropriation of funds to get that moving. It will be reimbursed by insurance, but we will have to pay the contractor. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes that have been circulated for that meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, so that passes. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation. I do not see, is anyone here to represent Dr. Ruth C. Wilson? Okay. So, what I think we'll do, there's, there's a couple of things with this proclamation. We either lost or cannot find our normal proclamation papers. Do you want to do this right?
We've had some issues at the village office.
So, I have something I can read and this will be printed, as David pointed out, it will be printed on our normal paper and signed by all of council. So, a little background, we received a, an email from Loretta and what was her last name?
I don't, I don't recall.
I didn't make a note of that. But a friend of Dr. Ruth Wilson, she lives in the village and in October, they will celebrate Dr. Ruth's 100th birthday. So, we'd like to have a proclamation for her. She appeared to stand in the well, but since she is not, I'll just read from this proclamation. So, a proclamation celebrating the 100th birthday of Glendale resident, Dr. Ruth C. Wilson. Whereas, Dr. Ruth C. Wilson of East Willow Avenue in the village of Glendale is celebrating her 100th birthday on Saturday, October 5th, 2024. And whereas, Dr. Wilson, a longtime Glendale resident, has made tremendous spiritual impact on all that have been fortunate enough to know her. She's a wonderful lady, if you haven't met her. And whereas, she is a beacon of light in the community as a renowned Bible teacher, having taught at Cincinnati Christian College, Cincinnati Bible College, and the Temple Bible College. And whereas, she has spent many years leading Bible study, singing, and playing piano in and around the village of Glendale. And whereas, she has spent much of her life dedicated to the, dedicated to the service and training of others. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the village of Glendale, Ohio do hereby recognize and celebrate the 100th birthday of Glendale resident, Dr. Ruth C. Wilson. Be it further proclaimed that the mayor and the council of, of the village of Glendale, Ohio call upon the people of the village of Glendale to celebrate Dr. Wilson's 100th birthday as well as her dedication to her faith, family, and her community. So, to Dr. Wilson. So, when David gets the materials ready, everyone can take a trip down to the village office and sign that proclamation. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone this evening that wishes to address council? C1, okay.
My name is Kevin Parrish, resident at 176 Washington in the village of Glendale. Takes me a minute to compose myself when I look at this council. Only because this is not what a council is supposed to be. Once I get in our ass and council, is there any council member present that represents people of color? That people of color can bring their concerns to you guys? Not just voting time and so that you could present them to council so they can get attention? Anyone?
I think, Mr. Parrish, this is your time to address council and not a question and answer session.
Well, these guys are all voted in by our votes. I think I could get a response if there's someone that's voted into a position of public servitude and they deny the people that voted, helped vote them in not to respond. But, it doesn't matter. I mean, I just want to show the dysfunction of what this administration is to, to the public. That's why I come, month after month. If, if the audience is posed, I mean, is viewed, if the cameraman could take a picture of the audience, they'll see that although we have public comment, you're not interested in the public comment. Because I come month after month and it's only five minutes and no one else waiting to make a public comment. But, that is Glendale. What I do want to draw their attention to is that we're going to be having a couple of projects done on this supposed water main. Keep in mind that the Phase 1 sanitary project that was done didn't comply with anything. The contract was for a pipe to be replaced on coal. There are no marks on the street to say that the pipe was replaced. It was 100% blocked. Not only that, didn't know who the contractors were. Took a picture and brought it down here and he couldn't identify contractor or the subcontractor. Asked where the free construction sign-in sheet was. Guys didn't have that, lost that. Asked if we get any money back from the 283 feet of pipe that was supposed to be put under coal. And yet, when they closed up the holes that were on coal, there was at least 150 foot left. Didn't have any of that. Asked about the inspection reports, none of that. That's just insane negligence of business practices for you guys to be having a contract for residents. That's what I took you to court of claims for. You lost all of that stuff. Who loses all that stuff and still has a job? These are documents that have to be enclosed in contracts for business, for our business. So, I just urge residents, since you're unclear of why we had to go to court of claims to get public records of how dysfunctional this council is. We have no representation, so I come month after month to put on the record just what a sad case of representatives we have for people of color in this community. And yet, you think that you getting on council is putting a feather in your cat?
You have about a minute.
And David keeps such a good time until it's a historic preservation and you can go over 10 minutes without keeping such accurate time. That's pitiful, pitiful position. But then again, you're so hungry for power that you don't see the landslide that's going to fall on you when accountability is put in place. The mayor is only accountable for the police and the fire and they're, they're beholden to the state, so he really doesn't have any jurisdiction over them. But all other decisions for, for this village of Glendale follow on you. So, you're smart. Who you think is going to be following on the sword? Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to address council?
No one else to address council.
So, I think I would like to remind everyone who is concerned about having an opportunity to speak with council or bring issues. The office is always open. The phone is always answered, so anybody who has anything that they need the village to look at or to talk about, you can do that at any time during the day. This is another example of an opportunity for people to address council. So, so that, and notes are taken, minutes are taken for those items that people want to address council with. And if there's a desire for that person to follow up, they can call David, they can call me, or they can call any of our council people. I think most in the village would agree that anytime you approach anyone, the issue is addressed. Anything that you have, that some sort of an answer is found. So, I note the presence of, ma'am?
Loretta Keeley.
Loretta Keeley, okay.
Kind of wandered out there.
All right. Is Dr. Ruth here?
She is not here.
She's not here? Okay, well, thank you for the email that you sent. And I'm breaking from our agenda. I'm going to go back to when we read the proclamation for Dr. Ruth. And I wanted to have something here that I could hand you and her tonight. But with the flood in the village office, we cannot find our official proclamation papers and our seal. So, we will get that done at a later date. However, since you are here, I'm going to read this again and then we'll switch back over to our regular agenda. So, you're here representing her?
Yes.
Would you like to step up in the middle here? We'll read this together. I don't need these.
My vessel?
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for all of this, this is wonderful. So, let's stand this way so council can see us and anyone here can see us. Okay, so this is a village of Glendale proclamation. Proclamation celebrating the 100th birthday of Glendale resident, Dr. Ruth C. Wilson. Whereas, Dr. Ruth C. Wilson of East Willow Avenue in the village of Glendale is celebrating her 100th birthday on Saturday, October 5th, 2025. And whereas, Dr. Wilson, a longtime resident, Glendale resident, has made a tremendous spiritual impact on all that have been fortunate enough to know her. And whereas, she is a beacon of light in the community as a renowned Bible teacher, having taught at Cincinnati Christian College, Cincinnati Bible College, and Temple Bible College. And whereas, she has spent many years leading Bible study, singing, playing piano in and around the village of Glendale. And whereas, she has spent much of her life dedicated to the service and training of others. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the council of the village of Glendale, Ohio do hereby recognize and celebrate the 100th birthday of Glendale resident, Dr. Ruth C. Wilson. Be it further proclaimed that the mayor and council of the village of Glendale, Ohio call upon the people of the village of Glendale to celebrate Dr. Wilson's 100th birthday as well as her dedication to her faith, her family, and to the Glendale community. So, thank you. Okay. So, that's one of the more, more grand spot type things we get to do here. So, to the mayor's report, I think, since we're finished with public comment. One more thing is, we keep hearing about this pipe replacement on coal. That pipe replacement did happen. I've heard David explain this so many times, I almost got it memorized. So, the replacement was done. The contractor in question was subcontracted by our contractor. We know who our contractor was. And the pipe was replaced, the work was completed. And in that particular case, that case was settled in favor of Glendale or actually resolved. And that was it. Found that the village of Glendale had followed all the correct procedures and there was nothing wrong with the village of Glendale's handling of that matter. So, okay, on to mayor's report. Births, none to report, although I do see a lot of little babies in Glendale. So, maybe somebody's just not reporting them when they get born. Hopefully, they will. A note to all the public that if, if you come in and tell us about your baby, we'll plant a tree for your child, so it's worthwhile letting us know. Deaths in the village, there were two reported. And one was Nancy Humbok, passed on August 20th at the age of 83. I did not know Nancy well. The other was Addison Klipson, passed on August the 18th at the age of 92. Many of us knew Addison. He was an architect, did a lot of work in the village, designed the pavilion at HWB and a lot of other wonderful work. Addison was the type of gentleman that, that did things for Glendale. He, of course, was an architect and, but there were many committees he served on and gave a lot of his time to our village and was a wonderful friend and neighbor. So, could we have a moment of silence for Nancy and for Addison? May they rest in peace. Upcoming events in the village. We'll have our street fair on September the 14th, put on by the village chamber and many, many other volunteers. It's 3 to 10, come out and have fun with your friends and your neighbors. There'll be food, there'll be drinks, there'll be games for the kids. There'll be a band and dancing, so it's, it's always a wonderful event. I think this is, I don't know how many years this has been, David, do you know?
No, I don't. I couldn't even guess.
At least 20. Our own Glendale Heritage Preservation is celebrating 50 years. So, this is their 50th year anniversary, just wanted to make a point about that. And then the First Presbyterian Church will be holding their golf outing on Saturday, September 21. And that benefits some local charities in the area. And that is it for the mayor's report.
Mr. Parrish, sorry. The Glendale Heritage Preservation, in, in honor of its 50th anniversary, is having a special event on the 15th. It's the open house
Yes, they are.
that you might want to check your notes on.
Yes. There is an open house on September 15th?
Yes.
And I think, I think the time has passed, the RSVP for that, but
Check the GHP website.
Check the GHP website.
But it's one to three.
Okay, one to three, thank you.
Got you.
Okay. And then that is it. Okay, David, would you give us an administrative report?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get into the numerous things here, want to mention or remind everyone that this upcoming week, not this week, but next week, week of the 16th, is the final week for brush collection for the season. We are copying the schedule we used last year where we're stopping brush collection about a month before leaf collection begins. Got a lot of positive feedback from Public Works Department on that. They're very happy with having that time between September and October to get some things done in the village before they are locked in on leaf collection until the snow. So, that will, everything will need to be out by the 16th in order to be picked up. We'll be doing one pass at each house that we typically do on that final week. So, make sure if there is brush, tell your neighbors, make sure it's out. Put a reminder in the newsletter last week. And the date's been posted on the website since, I think, the end of last year. So, hopefully, folks are plugged in on that and then
David, it's, it's the week of the, ends the week of the 16th or?
Correct, yeah. So, we'll do one last route on the 16th, on the week of the 16th.
So, if you miss it on the 16th, don't put it out on the 7th.
That's right. Bag it or bundle it.
Yeah.
So, after that, the thing that dominated the month of August for us was obviously the water damage at the village office. HVAC is going to be back online this week. We're thankful for that. And we have the architect working on some redesigns for the back portion of the office. See what's, see what's possible with the space that we have. Insurance is working on getting us a final report here, probably within the next week or so. And we will have a public buildings meeting once those plans are ready and we can sit and talk and go over some of those designs. Let's see, the Sharon's route for signal replacement is complete and the new lights are up and running. Much needed improvement thanks to SORDA grant funding. Out of pocket for the village would be about $50,000, $40,000 to $50,000 once everything is finalized. The water main replacements are, are still underway. EES is working with the Ohio EPA on submitting and finalizing our loan application, making sure that the EPA's questions are answered. And we anticipate where they will confirm funding in October. Still aiming to begin very late this year, early next year, keeping the same schedule, finishing up with Albion in the summertime and then starting repaving sometime in mid-year next year on the historic district and then heading to Albion. That work does include the fire hydrant replacement. So, the bourbons that we've talked about will be replaced by the contractor through the course of that work, when they're onsite in the village and they have their materials and everything, they'll be replacing them. We don't have a firm schedule on who will go first and who will go second and so on, but once that information's available, we'll definitely be publicizing it on the village's website and newsletter.
Do we have a sense of when we might be replacing the bourbons that are not a part of the water main replacement project?
They, I'm not, no, not yet. We'll have that information once we get a little bit closer to, to project time. We just don't know what their schedule's going to be quite yet for
Is there on the north streets where there won't be water main construction where there are bourbons?
And they, yes, and those are all going to be replaced? We just don't know when, yeah. But we'll publicize it once we do. We had two leaks that were repaired, two water main leaks that were repaired. And smoke testing is continuing to identify the sewer ion, storm water ionized into our sewer systems. And then finally, sent this out by email, but as a friendly reminder, if you haven't done your state fraud training, please do your, do your little homework assignment and turn your stuff in and we will keep the audience happy. But unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, David. And, and I would like to really recognize all of the village officials and employees that have had to work in that office through these, through the hot week last week. It's, it's really an uncomfortable situation. They're packed into three small offices. So, you know, hats off to you guys. Thanks for keeping the village going. So, standing committee reports, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call.
Finance committee, please.
The finance committee did meet on August 6th. We, the committee reviewed the financials of the first six months of 2024. David, Administrator Lumsden prepared the reports and including the $70,000 holdback revenue from the county plus about $15,000 in future refuse fees. This put the deficit, projected this year's deficit at about $13,000. Treasurer Bogran mentioned that there could be, hopefully will be $50,000 more than initially shown on the, the first reports. So, that would put us a small surplus if we can hold spending for these next, for the second six months like we had the first six. Also, there were $107,001 one-time special amendment expenses. We discussed those and those will not be recurring after this year. The next topic we discussed, Administrator Lumsden presented an update of Tri-State Trails regarding the bike path project. He informed the committee, there were two possible options, the Sharon Avenue path and the Oak Road green belt path. Tri-State Trails requested that the village select a preferred route for the conceptual engineering phase of the project. This route would receive focus from the engineers to determine the cost and any infrastructure challenges. Mr. Lumsden recommended that the finance committee select the Sharon Avenue bike route for conceptual engineering. After questions and comments from our committee, all six of us voted to recommend that the village administrator advise Tri-State Trails to study the Sharon Road bike pathway. And was there, was there any timeline on when they would get that?
I have a meeting tomorrow with them, so I'll look forward to what they present and circulate it back if there's any updates.
And that's it, Becky.
Thank you. Fire committee, please.
The fire committee didn't meet in August, but we have a meeting scheduled for September the 16th at 3:00 PM here in this building as opposed to the awful, awful administration building. And lots of things on the agenda, including firefighter 1 class, the ISO inspection, which I'm very interested in. Some new Genesis tools and grants information, but, so it should be a good meeting. And now over to Assistant Chief Laerman.
Thank you. Chief Yatter sent out his monthly report to everyone today, so you should have that from him. It's been a very busy month, like Nancy mentioned. We've got the firefighter 1 class, so if you're driving down Sharon Road Wednesday evenings or Saturday mornings, you're going to see a lot of vehicles and some neighboring fire apparatus at, at our station here because we have several departments attending this class. Not only Glendale firefighters, we have Green Hill, Green Hills firefighters, we have Sharonville firefighters and Terrace Park firefighters. So, it's a big class and it's going very well. They've got a midterm coming up in the middle of the month, so a lot of studying going on. Along with the class, our run volume's been up a little bit for the year. So, we've been busy with that. And then we're also out checking all the fire hydrants that are being painted right now and then also making sure that those are up to par with that. And then installing the stores connections, the adapters on those. So, the folks are out there doing those every evening as well. And speaking of grants, I'm happy to announce that we're awarded another grant this year. This is for an EMS grant from the EMS office for a little over $3,000 for EMS supplies. So, that is very, very helpful. So, David, we'll be sharing that with you so we can get that online. And then we will, the Firefighters Association will be at the street fair this weekend, serving our taco bar. So, backed by popular demand, we'll have some tacos for everyone in the village. So, please stop by and see us. That's it. Thank you very much. Yes.
Pancake breakfast? I knew that was going to come up over here, so I just might as well.
No problem, just give me, it's November, just give me one second. It is November 16th.
Good, thank you.
Sorry, November 16th.
No. Okay, November 16th.
Yes, yep, thank you for that. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Laws and claims, please.
Thank you. Laws and claims did meet August 27th. Among the things that we discussed at the meeting were the, was the NIC process and enforcement issues. NIC being National Inspection Corporation, our enforcement vendor for enforcing the property code. Good discussion, but it will begin on the agenda for our next meeting sometime this month, September. And we'll, we'll continue to work through that. We discussed social media guidelines, policy. That was a lively discussion and it will be, it was tabled until the next meeting, which we will again discuss in September. Proposed chicken code section revision. We didn't get too far into that, but it was on the agenda and we'll continue to talk about that. And lastly, pods, trailers, and temporary garages. Studying that and seeing what we can do in terms of, I guess, control and, and other issues related to that. With regard to the NIC process and enforcement issue, without putting you on the spot, can you just explain a little bit about what the new process is? The process for reporting a violation a violation is on the website, but some changes have been made to that, can you explain?
Yeah, so in order to, well, looking at NIC's performance over the last two years, they have taken on, I haven't had a chance to really dive into this data beyond what we discussed at the laws meeting, but I did receive a listing of all open cases by NIC, about 80% of those cases, over 80% of those cases were initiated by NIC rather than by citizen complaint. So, they are a proactive organization working to address property maintenance issues. What we're going to focus on improvement, though, is communication back out to the village for folks that have issues with either neighboring properties or whatever the case may be, properties they might drive by and see and represent an issue. So, we're going to, still working with NIC on the exact procedure there, but is, I'm going to get it tattooed on myself to save the voice, but call the office. If you have a complaint, call the office, and then we'll take your information and follow up, if you'd like, on those complaints. NIC's job is going to be the enforcement arm of the village, and as we typically are, will remain the communication arm of the village. So, looking forward to getting our new procedures ironed out a little bit, but goal is to make sure that folks are well versed in calling us in the office to get an update on a case, rather than, rather than work with NIC directly, simply because NIC is working on the enforcement of those cases, so.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, it's a slight change in the process, but it's easier to remember to call the office than it is to-
Right.
-go through the NIC folks who are, who do a very good job, and we are looking at, you know, kind of the, you know, what the, how they're doing. So, other than that, other than, you know, scheduling a time to meet for September, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec did not meet this month, will meet, if not later this month, in October, but I will just say that the fall soccer season is off to a strong start. We have a lot of teams. I think we opened up some new field space to house the soccer teams, and games started this past weekend.
Thank you. Police Committee, please.
Police Committee did meet on August 27th. Chief Walsh and Officer LaCombe discussed the Cortico Wellness App with the Police Committee. The Cortico app places wellness resources onto one app, which is convenient and fully confidential. The app assists in monitoring physical exercise and training, diet, sleep habits, and provides extensive wellness courses, plus questionnaires developed by industry, industry-leading experts to monitor if there are needs for physical therapy and/or psychological services. The app would be available to all full-time, part-time, and retired police officers, Glendale police officers, which currently range between about 16 and 20 individuals. Spouses and children would also have access to the app. Our committee unanimously agreed to have Administrator Lumsden look into whether our village's current healthcare provider offers a similar type of wellness program. And so, the Police Committee will also have a follow-up meeting in the next few weeks to discuss. And back from Hawaii, here's the chief.
Been back for a while. Thank you. Police Committee report will go out tomorrow. There were some errors when I looked at it, so it will go out for, out tomorrow, but I have a few, couple success stories with the flock cameras that I'd like to share. First being, about a week and a half ago, one of our residents with early onset dementia was with his daughter. They went to U-Haul Station in Sharonville to pick up a trailer for her. She was moving back to Chicago. She stayed to get the trailer, he left, and shortly after he left, we got a call for a missing persons report. The resident had gotten lost, and via help with the flock camera, we were able to locate him in Louisville, or Lexington, Kentucky, several hours later, and with the help of Lexington Police, they were able to track him down. He was wandering aimlessly in Lexington. So, that was one. Second was a, we recovered a stolen vehicle out of Springfield Township with the hit off of our flock camera. So, they are working. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, please.
So, we did not meet this month. We are kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for David to come back with the additional information for the village office, and then we will be meeting to discuss and go over what we are doing to move forward. So, I'm looking forward to a meeting, probably in the next few weeks to next month. That's it.
Thank you. Streets, Public Improvements and Lights.
The Committee did not meet this month.
Thank you. Utilities.
Utilities did meet on August the 28th, and it was a light agenda. We reviewed some housekeeping issues that were brought up, and David, as he explained in the presentation a few moments ago, addressed the water main progress, smoke detecting, 12 meters. It was, as I say, very light, and we will schedule a meeting later in September or early October to pursue the next discussions.
So, the next report is the Treasurer's report, Mr. Bogran.
So, I forwarded the results for August to everyone seated here. One addition I wanted to make when we have our Finance Chair mentioned that I found an extra $50,000. We hadn't lost it, it's just, we had budgeted at 250 in terms of returns for our investment for the year, and it looks like it's going to be about 300,000, so. That's pretty good for now, so that's all I have. If you have any questions, again, just reach out.
Thank you. Is there a report from the clerk?
Yes. The audit is in progress, even though the office is a hot mess. So, unfortunately, that did not have any delay. But anyway, so they, the auditors are primarily working offsite, so they're taking documents out of the offices, they're working on that. The payroll audit is the one that they're almost done with. We understand that the UAN audit is done, but they're going to provide the findings as a total package rather than two separate. So, we anticipate it will be done by fall, unless there's some water log reports we need to find somewhere.
So, Becky, quick question. Do we anticipate that we'll be doing an audit every year?
No, no, this is just because of UAN.
So, what's the plan?
Every other year.
Yeah, this is, yeah, every other year.
We did back-to-back because we transferred UAN this year.
Yeah, and we wanted to catch any issues early.
Okay, thank you for those reports. Now, on to old business. First item under old business is Ordinance 2024-34, an ordinance authorizing adjustments to the water utility rates and declaring an emergency. This is our third read of this ordinance. It's been explained a couple of times in great amount of detail the first time we read it. Are there any, well, first, is there a motion for the ordinance?
So moved.
Okay, and are there any questions or any further comments about this ordinance or discussion? None? Okay. So, I think, Madam Clerk, at this time, we would call the roll.
For Ordinance 2024-34, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes. The next is Ordinance 2024-35, an ordinance authorizing adjustment to the sewer utility rates and declaring an emergency. I'm sorry. David, do we want to, do we have to do this as an emergency, so it goes into effect immediately?
Yes.
So, we want to do that for both?
Yes.
Yes, we don't need a separate vote.
We don't need a separate vote, though?
No.
Okay, because we've read it three times.
Correct.
Great, okay. So, back to 2024-35. This is related to the water rates, the water and the sewer utility rates are related. Again, they were covered the first time they were read, there've been questions and discussion through the first two readings. And I might also point out, there was much work and effort put into figuring out how to adjust these rates so that it is enough to cover our expenses, which we have to do, but not an exorbitant increase beyond what's necessary to go forward. So, once again, is there a motion for Ordinance 2024-35?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, well, first, are there any questions, discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For Ordinance 2024-35, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes, thank you. Now, on to new business, Ordinance 2024-41, an ordinance authorizing amendment of the 2024 appropriations in the general fund and declaring an emergency. David, can you explain these, this ordinance and these three particular increases?
Certainly, Mayor. So, this ordinance increases our 2024 appropriations of the general fund in three different departments, community planning and zoning, finance and public buildings. Two of the three of these are essentially housekeeping items as we transition budgets. Things were moved, estimates were made, and we got close, but we didn't hit it. The first is the $10,000 increase, that is to cover building permit expenses. The village issues permits, and then collects those building permit fees, and then is billed by NIC for inspection services. So, essentially, the village, that money is money in and money out. There's no, there's no impact on our budget, except for perhaps delayed payments, but that's very minimal. So, that will have offsetting revenue for that $10,000 in permit fees. The second is an increase to make room for annual fees for the UAN software. We pulled, the prior budgets were, for a reason I'm still a little fuzzy on, had the expense for the accounting software spread across all village departments. So, some departments paid $100 for the year for the accounting software. We consolidated all of that under 725 Finance, and by doing that, we're hopefully condensing our expenses into departments that actually make sense. But through that action, did not move enough of that money over. So, we believe that room exists elsewhere in the budget, so I don't anticipate much of an impact to our final numbers with that increase, but we do need to increase it to make sure we can cover our software fees for the year with UAN, which are essentially equal to what we had with our prior accounting software, and remain incredibly affordable compared to other accounting software. The third is an increase to the public buildings operating line, in addition to the village office damage. We've also had some general maintenance things going on this year that have gone through the public buildings budget, maybe a little bit quicker than we would have liked, but this, this $6,000 should get us neatly through the end of the year, keep things like HVAC inspections, green belt mowing, village office incidentals as we go through our work to bring the office back up to operational, as well as just odds and ends expenses that come across with maintaining our old buildings. So, those are the three changes, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions? All right, well explained then, David. So, is there a motion for Ordinance 2024-41?
So moved.
Second.
And is there a motion to dispense with the three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For Ordinance 2024-41, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For Ordinance 2024-41, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then the last item we have on the agenda is the financial reports that were circulated for July 2024, and is there acknowledgement receipt of the reports? Acknowledgement?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Record.
Record time. Thank you, everyone.